The Hall is meeting to order the City Commission Rio Grande City. It's Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, approximately 6:05 PM. Here in Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Suede Ave, San Antonio, Texas. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
Good evening, Father. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to get together and conduct city business. We ask that you guide us. We ask you, Lord, that you help us make the proper decisions. We ask you, Lord, also to thank you and for the rains that we have received. We thank you for the weather that has warmed up. We ask you, Lord, that you bless the city council, that you bless the people here present, and that you bless this great city of Rio Grande. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. A blessing to be given to the United States of America and to all the citizens of our nation under God and the physical liberty of each and just all. Our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ, who is one and the only and the greatest. This time we'll have roll call in finding a forum. Spina?
Thank you. Mayor Villarreal?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Salinas? Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a forum, Mayor.
Thank you. This time we'll have item 1C, Public Forum. We have Ms. Joanne Yarborough, La Loma Vista.
Good evening. Commissioners, Mayor, Secretaries, Attorney. I'm Joanne Yarborough. I have resided in 306 East Fifth some time now, more than ten years, I would say. Noel and Edna Gonzalez have recently purchased what was Roberto Juan's land. It was a house on the corner of what used to be a meat market, a neighborhood store. I understand that applying for a permit to sell liquor would also fall somewhere in the same thing that what Roberto had there. But to sell and consume is the problem I have. I have lived, was born, and lived next to Chuchos Bar, which Noel also owns, Noel Gonzalez, and Edna. What went on there, I lived it, every day and night. Now, the zoning laws that this community has, that the mayor and commissioners have not been able to do, to regulate, I commend you. Nor the mayors before, nor the commissioners have ever tried to do anything about the zoning. And at this time, I'm asking, please don't do anything about it. Do not even change the zoning laws. Think about it, people. You will not sit in that chair all your lives. Terms change every day. And they're young people that are stepping on everybody's heels. And the people right now that are out there, politicians, politics, are teaching our young baby boomers how to do it. And they're being a little bit brighter than everybody else in here. Think about it. Let them one day put such a facility, a business, next to anybody's residential house and see how anybody's gonna like it. By long, they are supposed to let the neighbors there in that neighborhood know, the people. I talked to several people. They didn't get no letters. They were under the understanding that only offices were gonna be made there. That's what they were gonna open. I walked over to an individual, a man by the name of Israel, I think was his name, the alley right across the store. I asked him, "Who put the 'no parking' sign on your gate, did you?" He said, "No, Noel and Edna did." That's funny. I lived in the alley. I had those issues every day in my life. Where the customers that Noel had at Chuchos Bar would park and block my driveway, they were not that considerate. Is it could it be because they're anticipating that that elderly couple's gonna have problems with their clients? To say that it's a social event is another word to polish what a bar is. It looks nice, polishing, shining it up, buffing it. But that event center, I believe they have already had two or three events, and I've not seen a security inside or outside those events. KC Hall was built decades ago, decades ago, and they have the license to sell, but they have security in and outside. This place has never had it. This town has too many bars. And I commend, don't change the zonings. Maybe one day somebody will get it next to them. You were in positions to do it, but you're talking about that old man receiving a letter and not being able to understand English or read it? It was written in English. He walked over to Noel and Edna and asked, "What's this?" "We're trying to open an event center, social event center." That was what he was told by them. He said, "Okay, maybe a wedding, Inseñera? No biggie. Somebody walks in with a six-pack and they leave." And I said, "Do you know that there's a letter out there, billboard that says, 'Permit to Request for Selling and Consuming'?" He said, "I wasn't told." That changes the venue. It's no longer a social event, he said, in Spanish, "Escantina." That's what the man said. Good luck by him to put in a 'no parking' there. They're trying to be nice with it at the time, to try to get this license. Other neighbors around, I asked. I asked the corner, "They have a business, Dr. Hieras." I asked the lady, "Did you get a letter?" "No." I asked Lee Gomez, "Did you get a letter?" "No." I asked Florinda's boys, "Did you all get a letter?" "No." So you all think about what I'm telling you. I understand, it was a store. I understand, it's sold, but they didn't consume. And Chuchos Bar, like any other bar, has bottles. Downtown, you have a brewing company, you have tequilas, Chuchos. Albert Escobedo just opened another one, Taco and Bar. At least he didn't hide it. He said, "Bar." Over here, it's being polished by social center. Doesn't change it. It's smack in the middle of a neighborhood. Where you have elderly that cannot uproot, but they have done all their lives, live there, they're too old, sick, to be able to relocate. We all have choices, but some of us are not given when you have reached a certain age. When I bought my property and I sat there, I knew Casey was out there on top of the hill, but they had security in and out. These people do not believe in security in or out. It brings down the land value on the properties around it, anywhere that sells liquor and consumes. That's our property, you all are, your hands on right now. Everybody's around. Susie, Susie and Pat Sines owns two fifths of that block, but nobody wants to step on nobody's toes here. Everybody's old and tired. Think about the property values, they go down. Think about the property that anybody of your loved ones, or you, one day might have one of these next to you. Think about what you are leaving behind. That's food for thought before you pass a license. Because city is supposed to govern for everybody's well-being, not only for certain. As far as I understand, it's to better the quality of life of all citizens, not only certain. I'm not here to fight only for me, or to discuss that it's me that I'm being hindered. Everybody in that block is being hindered. The nuisance of loud music, people coming out out of the influence of alcohol, you never know what state of mind they're coming out in. Or if Texas has a law that they can walk in with guns, they can roam around with guns, you never know what happens. Once that mind is altered, anything can happen in a neighborhood block where you have elderly, children, and working people. Think about what I am saying this evening before you pass a yes on a permit to sell and consume. Think about what I am saying tonight. It's lives on stake, not only certain business people. It's a whole. To have these institutions place these businesses downtown and in neighborhoods should not be okayed, allowed. They should be outside the premises. Our schools, hospitals, everything's being placed outside. But the historical part of Rio Grande is being only with liquor license. Wow. I am wowed at this time. I really am. That is my interest. I had an alcoholic father. I know what alcohol does, and I'm not ashamed of it. But I myself do not say yes to a license. Think twice before anything is done. Having an alcoholic parent is not shameful, because I can say that a good majority of this town, this city now, drink. And it did back then. The only difference is that some people do it nicely, and some people don't. But we're talking about lives of our citizens, children, elderly, and class people working. There's a difference. You cannot uproot because a business is coming in.
You have one more minute, Mr. Perez.
That's fine, thank you. You cannot uproot. Eighty-year-olds cannot just leave, "Let me go move because this is happening next to me." They don't have the money and they don't have the strength. Think about it. And again, don't change it. Leave the zoning the way it is. One day, maybe one of you will get it, or your loved ones, and let's see how that's gonna feel. Will they be able to uproot and move, or they're gonna be stuck with what was left? Like everybody else is these days. Thank you for hearing me out, and you have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, item 1D, Departmental Reports.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. We've got Ms. Belinda here, that she's gonna be talking about the accreditation for the Main Street that's in progress, or is it already done, Ms. Belinda?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council. We received information, or we received the scores for the national accreditation. It's an annual survey that we do every year, and what we try to do is we try to focus on what is required for national accreditation through the Texas Main Street Program and the National Main Street Program. I'm very happy, I'm elated to know that we did score 103.75 this year. We will be recommended for recognition at the national conference, and it's just great news. We're so happy about this for our community. What we try to do is we try to focus on the four things, the four point approach, which is includes activities that the Main Street Program recommends. And as you will know, we tried to do beautification projects downtown, and they were very successful. We got very good response from our community. The trash cans are working great. It's less trash everywhere, it's just beautiful. We need to continue that. And of course, we can also use it to market or advertise. Also, those trash cans have a dual purpose for that. We had other projects, like the downtown benches, that were sorely needed because of the times that we have events downtown, we have parades, we have different things that are going on, and we have, actually, people really use them and they really like them, and of course, it has the city, the Rio Grande City on them. We had other things like, that were done, parking and handicap zones, striping on Washington and Mirasole's streets. And that enhances not only beautification, but it also is very important for our tourists, for our tourism, because they do park in the back of Mirasoles, and we did need striping that hadn't been done for a while, so it looks really, really nice out there. We had historic pole, banners that were done. We had one project that was really singled out in the report, and it was the least costly project, and it took labor from our Main Street Board and myself. And that was the project across the street. It was a blighted building, I saw, that we thought, and we purchased paying for like a hundred dollars, and we did it ourselves. So they really, really were really impressed with that particular project that we did downtown. So they encourage us to continue that, and that would help the beautification of downtown if we, if they could consider doing at least one project like that a year would be great, right? The 103.75 is just beyond my expectations. We had done a pre-score, which Ms. Rosa Gonzalez and myself worked on this actual report, and our pre-score was around ninety. We knew it was gonna be over ninety, and I think I had mentioned to the mayor, yes, we're gonna get that over ninety point score, but we more or less scored around like ninety-three, ninety-four, you know? Last year, we had an eighty-one point seven five, and it's a passing, just like anything else, but it's not recommended for accreditation until you get that over ninety score. So 103.75, as I say again, was beyond our expectations. And hopefully, the Main Street Board and the Main Street Coordinator will continue to maintain that score, or anything over ninety would be great, it's still, you know, accreditation would be great. Funding is different at all times, and I know that it changes, but we just need to continue the hard work and dedication, and it does pay off. I really want to express my sincerest gratitude to the Main Street Advisory Board, President Rosa Gonzalez, Vice President Oscar Gonzalez, member Adolfozoz Garcia, member Denise Alanis, and member Esther Ayala. Their dedication, their commitment, I was so lucky and privileged to work with that group of individuals, and we got so many things done last year. As you will know, I'm the curator for the Kelsey Bass Museum, and I aim to bring the same dedication, hard work, and commitment to the Kelsey Bass Museum, always moving forward, and nothing but the best for Rio Grande City. I'm very, very happy to report that to you all.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
To you and the board, and Commissioner Jones, that moves quite a bit about earth.
Yes. He wants results. Quarterback.
I would just say, we got the blueprint, I'm staying up there on the hundreds, you know, and, you know, I expect that to continue. You know, we have a lot to do in the Main Street, a lot of beautifications, you know, we have a lot that needs to be done in the downtown area, and I commend you for a great job doing the board.
Thank you.
To get us up there, I think that was the first time in history that, you know, we hit those rates.
Over a hundred, yes.
And we have the blueprint on how to do it and how to keep up there, you know? So long as I'm here, you know, I expect that expectation to continue. We have a lot to do in our downtown historic Rio Grande City.
And recognize that, again, to be nationally recognized, and I know we talked about this before, and said we're gonna get there. Well, we are there now.
I'm so happy.
And congratulations to be nationally recognized as the Main Street Program, which was one of our goals, right?
Right.
Is to get there.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it took a lot of effort, from EDC, obviously, funding, from the Main Street Board, certainly the staff.
Yes.
Commissioners that are out there, and again, and certainly the business owners that are there in that area, contributing, and of course, the population here in Rio Grande City contributing to this effort. So again, it's a collective effort, and it is great that, again, we're getting that recognition at the national level. And can't say and stress that enough.
Beyond.
It's a great, great accomplishment to everybody involved.
I did wanna thank, and I'm sorry I didn't mention this, I'm a little nervous, but I did wanna thank the city council with the full support of your support, right? The city council, city administration, EDC, Public Works, Tourism, and Planning, we were able to create a plan that met all the goals and criteria for state recognition and national accreditation. So the state is recommending that we be recognized at this time, and that'll be like March 26th, I think, in Kansas, Missouri.
Certainly that calls for celebration.
Yes, it's a great thing. And I also, I also wanted to bring up the fact that none of this would have been done without the cooperation of our community and our businesses downtown. I really agree with that. We had partnerships, we had adult probation that sent us those guys out there, and we were cleaning up that cemetery, and we had volunteers, we had so many people that got it to where it's at right now. And downtown, the same thing. Public Works is amazing, EDC staff also, you know, we had so much help, you know. At the end of the day, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming together and partnering and sponsoring and putting up with my face every day that we needed to get this stuff done. So it was, it was pretty good.
It's, again, you can't say that enough, great work. And now that you're certainly at the Kelsey Bass Museum, can certainly see a national recognition there due in the future. Look forward to that as well.
Yes.
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge, and I did, I did want to, yes, and yes. We do have a fundraiser, and Mr. Perez has asked me to talk about that. The Kelsey Bass met for the first time under, well, this year, on the 31st, and they did approve a new fundraiser. This fundraiser will help us acquire things that are sorely needed there at Kelsey Bass. We need an archival system, a software that we're looking into, and they have approved that. We also need humidity control because of the artifacts and the loan acquisitions that we have, and we do need to upgrade the security there. So we are working towards that, and with the help of our community and Mr. Jones, and Mr. Porras, and everyone else that is helping us with this fundraiser, we really appreciate it. So far this week, we have deposited nine hundred dollars already for three bricks that were purchased. This is a legacy brick program. It allows for families, businesses to shine, and also veterans, whoever wants to put something on their brick that will memorialize their loved one, or their business, or their family, is invited to participate in this. It's really taking off. We've gotten very good response from it. And what I wanted to do first was work on the exhibits and have something real to show people in what we're doing, what positive thing, and hopefully, get our young, our young future citizens and our community members of Rio Grande City to be excited about our heritage. We have a 10,000-year heritage, an Indian heritage here in Starr County, and that's why we find so many artifacts, like owl heads and tools and things that were, that were used by our ancestors here way before anybody else was here. And it's very, very exciting, kids love this. We are working on that Indian heritage, we're working on the vaquero and ranching, because that's what we're all about here, and the farming here in Starr County. So all these things, we also are working on the garment corner and other things like, we need a, we're working on a timeline also. But the main thing that we're focusing on right now is that fundraiser that Mr. Perez is, has there right now with that brick. It's a legacy brick program that we're doing. So we appreciate anyone that's interested in it, any business, any family member, just to contact me, the information, I think we put it on Facebook, right? Facebook? And the website also, if anybody is interested, we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
And again, can't say enough about all the boards and commissions that serve our community. Includes the Main Street Board, the Kelsey Bass Commission Board as well, Commission, our Historical Commission, and certainly EDC, and many of the other boards, and some of them escape my mind right now, but again, can't say enough about their volunteer hours and their dedication, and it's incredible that they're willing, again, to dedicate that time and make Rio Grande City a better place to live, to work, and to enjoy life. Can't say that enough about them, so again, express that to them, to the commission.
Thank you.
That we certainly are grateful for their service to Rio Grande City and our community.
I have a question about the project. What is the goal to fundraise and where the paper's gonna be located at or placed at?
We need to match, we have matching funds that we need to, so it would be the first, the goal would be to match the funds that we have right now with our budget. That's my main concern, at 7,500, but we're gonna super exceed that with the expectations that we have and the response that we're, that we're doing. I failed to specify where these bricks would be laid out, and that would be at the historic We did meet with a contractor yesterday, Sarah and I met with him. He's a gentleman out of Donna. He has done projects, in fact, I think he was part of the initial project where the layout is, where that historical brick was put there on Kelsey Bass, he did that, he said. So he has done projects at the State Farm Arena, at different places where they have this type of legacy brick program. So he is very knowledgeable, he came and he measured, and we should be doing really good, you know, with him.
Very good, thank you.
All right. So public announcement, contribute to the legacy for those of you that are out there that want to contribute and be part of the legacy here in Rio Grande City, is contact Ms. Trevino, certainly Mr. Porras. Again, you're leaving a legacy behind.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got Chief Castillo. Mr. Castillo, Chief Castillo's gonna be talking about the Special Crimes Unit.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
How y'all doing?
Hope it's quiet out there.
It's more or less, we're going. Last year, we got together with the Starr County Sheriff's Office, County Attorney's Office, Roma, PD, Escobares, and the RPD to get the Starr County Special Crimes together. And it's been really successful in their works throughout the year. And you know, as of February to February, you know, they've had over 134 arrests, they've confiscated over 113,000 dollars in cash from eight-liners, also another 17,200-plus dollars in drug money, which was in drug rates, also 1,440 pounds of marijuana, 419 grams of cocaine, 10.10 grams of synthetic marijuana, and they've conducted a total of 29 search warrants. And that's countywide. So they've been very effective. This is not including, you know, cases that they've been involved in, they've been assisting other cases such as arson, missing persons in San Isidro, homicide investigations, and you know, a bunch of other stuff that they've been working on this year as progress. We also have been talking about starting up a SWAT team that would combine all the, it would be a response team that would combine all the agencies in the county, and we'd be getting them trained and have some later response. And also, one of the agencies would be applying for, hopefully, a grant for equipment and stuff of that nature. This would grow the unit to different things as to search and rescue and some other stuff that we're looking for, you know, some ideas that come up for this next year or so. So that's where we're at. It's, there's a lot of work, they're also doing some of the elections cases that they've been working on, and you know, the guys have been doing really, really great, and I commend all the law enforcement agencies and everybody that's been involved in this unit to make it a success, and I thank you all for the support that you all have given us to do that. So that's where we're at with the unit.
I'd like to add, I mean, Chief has been leading that group, and of course, it's a first-year anniversary. It hasn't been an easy task to get folks from different departments to cooperate the way they have been, and without that cooperation, they wouldn't have had the success they've had this far. And so a lot of it is attributed to the Chief's leadership and ability to get people to work together. There's been cases that other departments have had that have been turned over to them, and there was, I think there was a kid or a teenager that was lost for several weeks, and they found this kid within a couple of hours. That goes to show that they're in communication with the local folks in the communities that is obviously giving them results quickly and helping out other law enforcement agencies. So a lot of that success is not just because of the, everybody's doing their part, but a lot of it has to do with the leadership that he's provided along the way, and I'd like to commend him for that.
Thank you, sir. We have partnered up with a lot of the state local and federal law enforcement agencies, and you know, we have a good relationship with them already, and it's gonna continue to grow with, something like monthly briefing meetings with some of the federal states and locals, so we could have a communication within the whole area and the county, and we'll be on the same page. So that's what the future of the unit looks like, and you know, we'll continue to work with it and get it where it needs to be.
Well, looking at it from, I guess, now that it's been a year, and you look at the results that they've had, can definitely quantify it and say that it's been very successful.
Yes, sir.
And again, when you're looking at countywide, at the Rio Grande City, certainly the communities of La Luja, Escobares, Roma, and the entire county, and this is a much-needed helper, alleviate some of the crime that... alleviate some of the crime that occurs in our communities. So again, can't stress that enough. It's been very successful with the numbers that you're reporting, and those are excellent numbers. And certainly can go back to the decision of comprising this unit certainly was a good decision, and certainly to your mentorship and guidance of this unit has been very successful. So certainly look forward to next year and expanding that. And now with the mention of that SWAT, that's definitely something that we can certainly support from a county perspective. So at this point would be, we could, in a sense, respond to other communities, whether it's in Roma if something's happened there, in La Luja, or here, or, which is the idea of this SWAT team.
That is correct. Roma has a really active SWAT team already, and, you know, they would be probably taking the lead on that one because of their experience, because they've had it for many years. And we're going to get some other officers trained and get going with the plan. It's already been kind of talked about. We just need to solidify with this.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Bass?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Perez. Keeping in line with milestones and goals that the city has proposed, and I know the staff, a lot of actions are done in response to needs, but it doesn't stop there. They continue making plans and for future goals and projects. One of those is, you know, we started with the Affordable Homes in South Texas, and they have now signed up their very first home buyer.
Nice.
A young couple. They were here last week, and they were very happy. And I just want to stress to the community and the public, the program is still open. You can still make applications. They haven't finished. It's a five-year program, efforts to the city and the EDC. So that is another success story that I feel that is going to continue, and we're going to continue having this project in the future. Also, want to stress out to the community, we saw the people out in the lobby. Our goals for the United Way Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program has doubled from last year. Already $161,507 have come into the community in refunds up to February 13th. Another free program that the city provides in partnership with United Way. They're all volunteers, and it's getting paid, and it's a free service program, and they will be here until the first week of April. So also, the other partnership that I want to stress is, as we're growing and we see our transportation needs, one of our other partners, Valley Metro, is bringing in two additional new vans, new buses. They're nice-looking. They have asked for the type of logo that we're looking to put on the buses. They're ready to have a ribbon cutting. So I feel that once the city starts having transportation needs in public transportation, mass public transportation, it's a sign that we're growing, and it's not stopping there. We're looking forward to establishing a bus depot also. So moving along with all the other projects, I know Ms. Guian will also report as we're moving forward with our economic development program, a project in front of Walmart. I do want to stress out those milestones that we've been accomplishing, sir.
Well, when you're looking at transportation needs that our community needs, I mean, again, it's, it's something that we need to continue to promote, and certainly having these partnerships.
Yes.
I mean, goes a long way, and along with the other programs, is by the program about income tax and bringing those monies here, and affordability as far as housing. So congratulations to that couple, and certainly I'm sure there'll be others as well.
They're still taking applications, and they're working with a lot of people.
For those individuals that would like to go ahead and contact, and they can call here at City Hall, get some of that information as well.
Yes, sir.
Again, for the communities, these are programs that are affordable and are available to the community and to satisfy some of the transportation needs, housing needs, income tax as well, bringing more monies into the community. So there are so many things that are happening, yes, and somehow, we still need to work on just making sure that everybody's aware of all these wonderful things that are occurring, because again, it reflects back to the community and what we're serving. So, thank you, Ms. Bass. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
The next one up is a whole department of Juan, you know, it's the IT department. We lost Jesus not too long ago, and I wanted to introduce a new member, Mr. Juan Mourinho. He's been, he hit the ground running. He didn't have a choice. He came in at a time when our phone system was out for almost a week, a little over. Felt like a month to me.
It felt, yes.
So he's hit the ground running and has made a lot of progress in a very short period of time. He's been addressing a lot of our problems. He was working late yesterday with E-Rate, the connection coming in through the library, things that have been hanging out there for a while. He's been addressing the priorities of the different departments based on their priorities, and they are telling him what is important to them. But he's got a long road ahead of him, so we do ask every department for the cooperation to continue to be patient. He is moving quickly, as quickly as he can every day, but I just wanted to show his face out here to, so the Commissioners, if you, Mayor, you see him out and about, you know that he is on our side, helping us out.
It's Mr. Mourinho.
Yes.
Mr. Mourinho, would you like to say a few words? Welcome.
No, just happy to be on board and, you know, it's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir.
And he's busy.
Yes, I can imagine. Hey, when you're looking at cybersecurity, security in general, obviously, those are areas and that are infrastructure that we need to continue to make sure that we're up to par.
Yes.
Again, thank you, sir, for joining the team. Appreciate it. Good to have you.
Thank you. And I'd like to open it up. I think Fernando, you were up next.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. We're still continuing working on most of the alleys in the city, so we can, you know, make them look nice.
The grass looked great on the reporter, by the way. Wanted to stress that.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, sir.
Excellent.
And so this past month, we filled up 19 roll-offs, 19 roll-offs of mixed brush and brush. There was a total of 42 tons, 0.4 on brush. And mixed brush was a total of 40.12 tons on mixed brush. So on the 27th, it's going to be the deadline for those roll-offs of the 14 acres. Okay, we're going to be surveying and studying the area of what's going to be the cost of this past month that we've been working on this.
Right, so in the cleanup project, we set up those roll-offs at the 14 acres. And so we've allowed residents to come in, show proof their residents to drop their stuff off, in hopes that we don't have to pick it up everywhere around the city. And that seems to be very successful, but we just want to take a pause, analyze it, determine the cost involved, and see we're going to continue. If we are, how often. He's also focused on cleaning the alleyways. I don't know if you've seen the alleyways, but they're super clean.
They're doing a good job.
Yeah, he's still working on that. He's not done. But Mr. Milan, I don't know, I don't see him. Mr. Milan's been working in conjunction with him and Aviela also. All of them been working together. Mr. Milan is coming in behind on the alleys that Benin already cleaned up, and he's already cited some folks out there that started dumping again immediately after they cleaned it. And so the whole purpose behind them working together is to avoid having to clean up the alleys all the time and not ever catching up, and educating the residents that, hey, you want your stuff picked up, you need to put in the front yard. And there's a time of the month where we pick up the bulky stuff, the mixed brush, and so on and so forth. So we're going through an education process in the citywide cleanup process.
And they're open until 6:30 in the evening, and that allows the people, you know, to get more.
After hours.
Yes, sir.
You know, that thing really helps for emergency vehicles to go by, let's say, fire departments, police departments, utility vehicles also, in case they need to service the residents. You know, it's, this thing is going to work real good, sir. And in the street lighting report, we reported 14 street lights off. Did a little survey last month. We continue this month also. So we had reported 14 street lights off. So that's my report.
Any new requests or new lights anywhere?
No, sir. No, sir. Not yet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We need to follow up around the hallway on
Yes, sir.
That area up there on the north end of Embassy.
Yeah, I'm going to get, I'm going to get all the cost estimates from what's going to cost me for to provide those four-way stops.
Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Finance, you want to talk about the audit?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman.
Good evening.
Little update on the audit. Just wanted to say that I submitted everything over to the CPAs. Unfortunately, it's going to take about another two or three months to finish, to finalize it. There are new auditors, so they got to look into everything. I did submit everything, I believe it was on Thursday of last week. So now it's on their hands, at least.
So where does that put us?
So now, the plan is they're jumping into last year's. And so their goal is to finish the last year's, reconciling everything, do-tos, do-froms, having anything ready for them by the time the auditors come back with the one they just submitted to them. So they're looking at the next two, three months, finishing last year, so that they're already on top of everything else. From that point forward, and it should be pretty close, because they've been, based on the findings that previously were recommended to us as far as things we needed to fix, they've taken those steps, plus they've been keeping up. And so what they're working on now shouldn't be as difficult as the previous years when it was, you know, still very disorganized.
So our goal is to have everything ready for them to start as soon as they finish in the next two, three months.
That way, from here on out, it will be up to par.
Today.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? That's it?
Going once, going twice, no? Mr. Hernandez, I know you always have something. Do we have a great function recently to, what was it, the?
Chili showdown.
Yes, a chili showdown. Nobody talked about our chili showdown. It was a great success.
That was the EDC. I cannot take credit for someone else's either. They did a great job with that, and I'm glad, I'm glad. The more events that we have, the better. It helps, obviously, for tourism, and the good thing is that there was teams from out of town, which is really great. Christian and myself have been starting some interviews that we want to use to showcase the year, some of the partnerships that the city and the EDC has had. So we recently interviewed a gentleman from the Affordable Homes, and some of them from Tech dot Workforce Solutions, and we interviewed Dr. Reed from STC. So they have nothing but great things to say about the city, the partnerships, and all the great things that are coming to the city. So we've been working on that. I've been assisting the museum on their fundraiser, so we've been very busy.
And we're looking again at Fahita Kokov? Or we're looking, considering?
We're in negotiations.
So, working out the details.
All right.
Working out the details on that one. To be, you know, the most beneficial to the city. We don't want to put any type of financial strain and, and commit to something as far as sponsorships. Typically, I'm the one that goes out and looks for the sponsorship, so I kind of already know how much money is out there to collect. So, yeah, we are in negotiations at this moment. So we'll keep you posted as soon as something comes up, and I think that's it.
You know, Mia and Sarah have been getting together, and she's going to be bringing up some numbers, you know, trying to light up the downtown Rio Grande City. So, you know, we've been talking, going back and forth on some measures, and she's going to be coming up with, hopefully, a good number, you know, so we can give a plan, be able to light up the downtown area.
I told him we could not discuss Christmas until July, Christmas in July, but he didn't want to wait. We're in February, we're already talking about Christmas, so.
They're considering points.
Yes. All to benefit the historical.
Points, points, points.
That's the driver.
It's all about the points. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Next, Business and Orders Item 2, Consent Agenda. You have Letter A, Approval of Departmental Travel Request. Letter B, Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings. Letter C, Approval of Action Taken at Meeting of Article 17, held at January 25, 2018, and February 12, 2018. And Letter D, Approval of Action Taken at the Meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center, Commission Held on January 31, 2018. Commissioner, you have the packets there. Anything we need to?
There's a couple of travel arrangements for the police department. They're all related to training classes. Planning Department's also an inspection institute that are attending in March. And then we got the library folks going to Texas Library Association. Those are the travel arrangements.
We have a motion.
So, Mayor, we approve all Consent Agenda items, A through D.
We have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items, Letter A through D. Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. She carries. Next, Business and Orders, Item 3A, Ordinances, First Reading and Approval of Ordinance Number 2007-10, Amending the City of Rio Grande City's Fee Schedule by Increasing Certain Fees and Imposing New Fees, Including Fees Required for Variance Applications, Septic Tank Inspections, Contractor Registration, Reinspections, and Single Minor Subdivision Final Plaid Applications to Help Offset Direct Costs incurred by the City of Rio Grande City When Conducting Such Inspections and Processing of Appropriate Applications. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Again, this is the amendment of ordinance 2007-10, which specifies the fees for building construction inspections, re-inspections, et cetera. Some of the fees that, again, we didn't have was...
I know we discussed it at length, our last meeting. Did anything change? I don't know.
The only thing that changed, Mayor, was the ordinance number.
Correct. It's an amendment to 2007-10.
It's an amendment to 2007-10.
Yes.
Okay. Any particular items, Commissioners? You have questions on this view?
No.
Anything that you would like to?
We need to keep up with this fees and...
Cut.
Again, this is not, we're not increasing any fees, except the reinspection fee. At this point, it's only $20. And this fee has been in place since, you know, many moons ago. And again, it's to offset the cost. This is back when the gasoline was a dollar a gallon.
And really, all these fees are to offset the costs incurred by the city to provide this service, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Enter. Any questions? And now we entertain a motion at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, a second by Commissioner...
Gasa.
Gasa. All right, Commissioner Gasa. Hey, I'm nice. You approved the ordinance number 2007-10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. She carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan. Next, Business and Orders, Item 4, Resolutions. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action Approving Resolution Number 2018-3 for Crime Victim Liaison Grant Under the VA Victims of Crime Act Formula Grant and Required Matching Funds.
Mayor, this is the Crime Victims Fund, and it covers two years. The grant amount is for $97,215, $212.50. This also covers $5,290 of travel and training. That's including along with some of the fringe. It does carry a cash match of the total of $18,000, which is $9,025, $9,025 per year, which we can budget for this upcoming year. It's, because it starts after October. So that's what the Crime Victims Liaison Resolution is. This last year, we started late with this grant, and the grant coordinator was out for a while because she had been sick. But she serviced 33 victims, and, you know, this includes protective orders and taking them to counseling and group counseling and everything that shows the victims of the process for protective orders and what they need to do if they're victims of some crime. So it's been effective. I've seen her doing a lot of stuff. I work with her, and she works lab with the investigators and with the police department. But there is a cash match, but the total is $97,212.50.
Okay. Any questions? And now we entertain a motion.
Also, motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Ramirez, to approve resolution number two, two zero one eight, dash, three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in orders, item four B, discussion and possible action approving resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, four, for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and Required Matching Funds.
Yes, sir, this is, uh, the, uh, the drug, uh, human trafficking grant. That grant is also for, uh, that's for forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four, four cents. That's an application that we have to apply, uh, year to year, and, uh, uh, this, this grant is, uh, for one year, and this has no cash match, so it's what it is, and, you know, it covers, uh, the whole grant. Some of the travel and training are also included in this grant, uh, for the officer that is in, in charge of this.
Motion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez to approve resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, four. Have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is, uh, letter C, for C, discussion and possible action approving resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, five, authorizing the Finance Department to open a bank account for the Economic Development Administration Project, number zero eight seven nine zero five zero seven four, and to transfer the matching funds from the Rio Grande City Economic Development Corporation account.
Mayor Commissioners, this is one of the first steps to establish, uh, the financial component of the grant, the EDA grant, for the Economic Development Project in front of Walmart. We will be incurring pretty soon some professional fees, um, and in having, one of the compliance with the contract, this is to open a separate bank account, to keep the funds separate.
Okay. Have a motion.
Also, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza, to approve resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is, uh, item four D, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, six, calling the May fifth, twenty-eighteen, general election. Four D.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a regular item to be in compliance with the election law. So we have to set a resolution to call the, to order the election for May the fifth. Those are the official steps, we're calling an election. And you also have the listing of the items that we'll be using, the system, the software. You have a copy of the Order of General Election, which you will be signing after the meeting. And you have the contract for the software and the equipment we'll be using. We used police from the county, but since the county's having their elections, then the run-ups, we're not able to use this year. So we are gonna actually have to pay full price for our machines and our software.
And it's only one location, is it?
It's gonna be one location. If not, it's gonna put a big burden on the budget if we do two locations.
What location is that? Which location is that, here?
We have this one.
Maybe one day we can buy our own equipment.
One day we can buy our own.
And then we don't want to lease it.
Now, if down the road, we wanna add another site to location, you just come back, or let's see?
We can come back and change it, of course. We would have to bring it to a meeting, and we could change a lo- or add another location.
Add another, okay.
Okay.
We have a motion.
I have a motion.
Second, okay, we have a motion to approve, a second, oh, motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones, to approve resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item four E, second reading of resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation related to improvement for the Port FM seven fifty-five project, four E.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the same resolution that was approved in our January meeting. The only thing that was removed was the word execute, so that's why you have the second reading, because you approved it as long as we removed the word.
Okay.
Which was dead.
Also move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza, to approve resolution number twenty-eighteen, dash, two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in orders, item five, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers on premise license for, by Edna Gonzalez for business located five oh three North Washington Street. Five A.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, may begin by saying that all the planning items, letter A, B, C, D, P, N, F, have been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. This is the, uh, application at five oh three North Washington Street. It is for an on-premise license. The last time this location had a license was in the year two thousand, I believe, two thousand and two. The late, uh, Roberto Juan Garza had a, uh, mid-market convenience store at that location. However, it's been closed ever since. Uh, Mr. Garza died not too long ago, and it was purchased by Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. and Mrs. Noel and Edna Gonzalez, they applied for a, an events place, it's what it's gonna be turning, uh, to, it is not for carryout, it's for consumption, special events, uh, weddings, quinceañeras, what have you. But, um, again, he hasn't had a license since the year two thousand and two.
And this is the same one that Ms. Yarborough was talking about?
Correct, yes.
Now, some of the concerns that she had was that it imposed, I'm assuming that we took care of all?
Yes, uh, the nearest church is six, almost seven hundred feet away. And, uh, every time we get an application, it, it makes us, it makes stuff work, we read, we go over ordinances. I, I noticed that for religious entities, he has to be three hundred feet away, and the, the church, it's, uh, six hundred and seventy-eight, uh, feet away, so it's safe. Schools, on the other hand, it has to be a thousand feet away. Uh, the nearest school is a thousand, eleven hundred feet away, which is a comment. So it meets city ordinance at this point.
It meets all city ordinances, plus we advertised, and we posted, and everything?
Wouldn't have to advertise due to it's in compliance with city ordinance.
At this point?
But, uh, to add to the, I, I, I know TABC is required to put notice in the front door, and it's a big, not a small sign.
That's...
That's advising everybody and anybody that's from the neighborhood that's driving by or walking by. They should be able to see it from the street.
That's a state requirement, and it was posted as, as per state requirements. That's why the, uh, neighboring constituents had a chance to contact them directly.
Okay. And really, that's the question.
Another, yeah, another concern they had was, was, uh,
That's right.
adequate security during the night, can we add a component to these, uh, event centers that, uh, you know, there, if they're gonna be open in the evening, that, that they must have a, and so alcohol, that they must have a security guard, uh, present?
We need to look at what other cities are doing and see what we can recommend.
You can, you can go by ordinance, you could, I mean, they still have to pull the proper, uh, permits for occupancy, obviously.
I mean, obviously, they're gonna be renting these place, place for events.
Yes.
You know, they can, they can pass on the...
At the cost to those renters.
You know, to the rent.
Correct.
So, I, I...
And it makes sense.
I don't see it being a problem.
So the place has not received occupancy?
I'm sorry?
It has not received occupancy, uh, permit?
No, no, not yet.
Then I think she mentioned there was two or three events already held.
Not that I know of.
And the application was all filled out properly?
Obviously, they, they have personal events, if it's family or their own people, but not public. This, uh, we have an issue with a license.
I, I know in the past, there was, uh, sometimes the application was not filled out properly, were the application filled out properly this time?
Right, uh, it, the beginning didn't follow the proper channels, but that's what we're here for. I took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was presented, and they consider the facts.
So, planning and zoning approved it? And then any other?
I, I saw a move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
I'll send a motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor?
Let's look into that one.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item five B, discussion and possible action on lot size variance request by Rio Delta Engineering for the, for the Ruben Martinez subdivision.
Yes, uh, ladies and gentlemen, this, uh, variance request has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I looked at the city requirements, and it's a minimum of five thousand square feet lot requirement. This actually exceeds the square footage required. However, the lot size is gonna be forty-seven point five feet wide. Uh, why? The city's asking five foot, uh, right-of-way, additional, additional right-of-way along Charco Blanco Road. Um, does it meet city ordinance? Yes, because it's over five thousand square feet anyways. It's, uh, it's a hundred and, uh, twenty, uh, hundred and twenty-five, I believe, or twenty-seven, uh, by forty-seven point five feet.
So when you apply the setbacks, the width of the house would be?
Yes, well, yeah, again, it's, it's a corner lot. It, uh, at the plan department, at the time of, uh, site plan approval, we had to look at all those, uh, considerations, rear setback, uh, side setback, of course.
So any, any concerns, any issues?
That's right, again, the, uh, variance request was to give the city additional five feet right-of-way. That's basically the whole purpose of the variance request.
All right.
And it's been approved by the planning zoning, so? Yes, sir. Uh, make a motion to approve, man.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item five C, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for final approval of the Ruben Martinez subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the same subdivision along Charco Blanco and Moren Drive, those two lots. However, the variance was introduced before the actual subdivision, so that it can be approved, the plat can be approved with the variance request.
Also move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item five D, discussion and possible action on request by Melvin and Hunt for preliminary approval of Las Nodias, five, Arrancho Santo Domingo subdivision.
Yes, uh, Mayor, this is a twenty-seven lot development, residential development presented by Melvin Hunt, Mr. Topic in the audience. Nodias Phase Five, uh, it is gonna be serviced by, uh, uh, sanitary sewer, the CCN of La Niña Water Supply. Uh, this is, uh, the fifth, uh, phase of what's already phases one to four, obviously, and a commercial development in that area also coming up.
Any questions?
No. Also move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in orders, item five E, discussion and possible action on request by Melvin and Hunt for prelim- preliminary approval of the Nodias Commercial Phase One subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, this is the commercial phase of the, uh, Las Nodias, same area. This is three commercial lots along of the, uh, Highway eighty-three. They're one point five acres each. They share a proposed fifty feet right-of-way adjacent to Highway eighty-three. Again, it's for commercial purposes.
Aye, entertain a motion.
Also move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, a second by Commissioner Garza, to approve, lim- preliminary approval of the Nodias Commercial Phase One subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Next, uh, item five F, discussion and possible action on request by Melvin and Hunt for preliminary approval of the Los Rancho de las Estrellas subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, this is a residential subdivision. This is between the, uh, Mirranjita Road, basically connecting all the way to Santez Road now. Uh, residential lots, it's twenty-one lots, it will be serviced by septic tanks, CCN of Rio Water Supply, and it will be provided with an inch water line. Again, it has been recommended for approval by, uh, Planning and Zoning.
Does that move connect all, all the way to, uh, Santez Road?
Right now, it, 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 there's no cross between Mirranjita and, uh...
Santez?
This subdivision will connect, it's about three thousand feet long.
Okay. Now one?
So that will have from miles minus one to three one sixty-seven, once it's completed.
Now one, also move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Send a motion.
Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item six A, city manager's report, discussion and possible action to select a firm to assist the city with the engineering services related to the city's EDA project. The firm will be selected based on the highest ranked SOQ for professional engineering services submitted on February fifteenth, twenty-eighteen.
Mayor Commissioners, you have within you the tabulation of scores. This is another step in moving forward with the project. This action would, uh, select the firm, and we will start the negotiation to come back later to approve a contract for the fees.
And as for the memo, I see recommendation, is SMB infrastructure?
They're with the highest score.
Okay.
If the negotiation is not successful, then we move on to the next firm.
Okay. Any questions? Those were the packets, of course, that we turned in.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
Also move.
Okay. Have a motion to approve.
Okay.
Have a, by Commissioner Ramirez, a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in orders, item seven, contracts and agreements. A, letter A, discussion and possible action to award the EDA project construction inspector contract to Rio Delta Engineering. Seven A.
Mayor Commissioners, Rio Delta was the only firm to have submitted. It is the checks and balance between the city and the engineer to provide the daily onsite, uh, inspection of the project. Uh, again, this is, uh, to start the, the negotiation to come back with the contract.
Okay, also move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next is item seven B, discussion and possible action to approve a contract with the Rio Grande City Four B Economic Development Corporation as allowed under Texas Local Government Code, uh, two seven two dot zero zero one B four for the sale of five point nine, ninety-six acres located generally near FM thirty-one sixty-seven and US Highway eighty-three to be developed by the Foundation for Showing to the Contract, seven B. Ian?
Good evening, mayors, commissioners. Uh, before you, you have a contract, uh, which is an offer, uh, from the EDC to purchase land as part of the USDA grant that was awarded to the, uh, EDC. Uh, in there, it outlines the, uh, the sale, uh, agreement for the five point nine six acres located off of FM thirty-one sixty-seven and eighty-three.
Any questions on, on the contract and agreement? Not, we have a motion.
Also move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez to approve the contract, uh, as per letter B. Have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in orders, item eight, executive session, chapter five five one, thank you, Ms. Ian. Five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, and section five five one dot... and section five five one dot zero seven two, uh, Texas Local Government Code, letters A, B, and C. It is seven fifteen PM. Okay, we're back from executive session, it is eight thirty-eight PM. We convene, item nine, reconvene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. Item nine A, discussion and possible action regarding cause number DC fifteen six oh four, BF Highway Services of Texas, LP Lightway Services of Rio Grande Valley versus City of Rio Grande City, Texas, and its elected officials and their official capacities. At this time, there's no, we have any action on this matter? No action?
No action.
Anybody can, no action on, uh, letter nine A? Moving on to letter B, nine B, discussion and possible action regarding personnel matters. There's no action this item as well?
Uh, I believe there is, Mayor, uh, for nine B, uh, I make a motion to rescind the authority that was given to the city manager on January seventeenth to negotiate lease agreement for the Boys and Girls Club Building.
C.
Yes.
Or was it nine C?
Nine C.
Nine C.
Okay. Going back to nine B, there's no action. And nine C, discussion and possible lease sale or purchase of real property, track one and track two. And that is-
For the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, this time I'd make a motion to rescind the authority that was given to the city manager on January seventeenth to negotiate lease agreement for the Boys and Girls Club Building.
Okay, we have a motion, rescind by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. This time, do we entertain a-
I assume.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Right there.
Have a second to adjourn by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries, meeting adjourned. Eight forty PM.